Clerk Paul, can we call the council meeting to order, please?
Lennon.
Here.
Roywood.
Here.
Liza. Liza.
Here.
Faith.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Aronella.
Here.
Carmichael.
Here.
Eight present, Mayor.
Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could, please keep with our thoughts and prayers on the minimum we have on the street tonight. Let's say a special prayer for Alderman Laja's wife Patricia, who had a tragic accident in Springfield, but is recuperating, we hope nicely. Thank you. If anybody wishes to address the open forum, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address.
Does it sound like it's on?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my Berwyn friends and neighbors. I'm Tony Ward, President and Commissioner to Berwyn. I come here today to announce our sixth annual Veterans Luncheon and Expo at Morton West Stadium on June 17th. We will have, we estimate somewhere around 125 to 150 vendors, with everything from job services to health aides and other types of companies that support the community. Veterans are always free at this event. If you'd like to buy lunch, it's $15. It's up to you, no pressure. Mission BBQ is the food. I also want to make note and announce that the night before, June 16th, we're going to hold a concert at Morton West Stadium featuring Seventh Heaven and Hillbilly Rockstar. Gates will open at 3:00. Concert will begin at 4:00. There'll be a short intermission between 4:00 and 6:00. 6:00 and 7:00. Sorry about that. And tickets are 15 bucks, general admission. If you want to be down on the ground, if we can put chairs on the ground in front of the bandstand, it'll be 20 bucks. Veterans, again, are free. Just to remind my Berwyn friends and neighbors, next month will be Memorial Day. There will be the normal Memorial Day services here in Berwyn. Leschick Park, one block down by the township health offices at 11:00 a.m., 11:30 here in front of City Hall. And the third service is at Mount Auburn Cemetery at 41st and Oak Park in Stickney. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Happy birthday, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brandy Arlove. I am the CEO and founder of Love Link Entertainment. I'm a freelance journalist and proud parent of, at Morton West, and proud PTO member. We have some concerns in regards to the proposal to implement an additional SRO officer to the tune of $130,000. And so I really believe that those funds could be utilized in a better way. Also, too, I don't really believe that Plan A for the metal detectors was actually activated in the correct way. I know it was a pilot, but we still have some concerns about that, too. And so we will want to have to meet with all of the aldermen to see how, because we're all opposed to that. We don't want to see that. We think that the children aren't being policed enough, especially black children at the school. And so we don't need that. We need to come up with a better plan.
We don't have anything to do with the metal detectors. That's strictly the school. The SRO officer, the school requested of us. So that is under our purview, which was approved. Metal detectors, though, has nothing to do with any of the aldermen here. That's strictly the school board.
Okay, well, this is what I was told to propose, right by the PTO president. The second problem is, I witnessed a really bad accident last week. On 27th and Oak Park Avenue, I was traveling southbound on Oak Park Avenue. It's a four-stop intersection, it's a really bad intersection. And a young lady, actually, her car got crashed into a pole. So I talked to a couple of the homeowners. They said that's a frequent hotspot. So I don't even think you should be able to come across Oak Park Avenue. And everyone says that their view is obstructed. So we need some additional signage and or crossing guards, because I don't even come down 27th anymore when I pick up my kids.
Okay, Director Schiller, you'll give that to the engineer. Taver, take a look at it.
All right. That concludes my complaint.
Thank you.
Before you go, could you tell me your last name again?
It's Brandy Arlove.
Thank you.
Ma'am? No, the next one, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Joy Harrison. I'm a resident of, I've been a resident for Berwyn for four years. I'm also a PTO parent of a freshman. My concerns, I have a few. The first one is, I live just on 18th and Harlem. That alley in the back, it's, it's terrible. You know, you can tear, you can tear your tires up. It needs to be repaved or something. There's apartment building just, I want to say, on the west side of, on the side, and then on the, on the east, on the east side is the, is the housing. And we believe that the homeowners are taking their garbage and putting it near the dumpsters that's assigned, that's assigned to the apartment buildings. And that, we don't, that can cause rodents, and we don't want that. That's, that's been happening quite frequently. Another, another issue is the street cleaning. There is a sign that says that they, that four street cleaner on 18th Street, but I don't see it's being done. There's a lot of trash on the street. There's an issue, we have, we have had issues with individuals breaking, breaking into cars. There's been gentlemen walking up and down 18th, just, just, just patrolling the area. Especially, I leave, I leave out for work at like 4:00 in the morning. So you, so I'm kind of leery, and we've, we've noticed that just, just strange individuals just walking around. And it's been reported that they're tampering with people vehicles. So the main issue is the, the alley, the alley on 18th, the street cleaning, and just, it's just unsafe right there for vandalism, vandalism between 18th and Harlem and 8, and 18th and Maple, between 18th and Harlem, 18th and Maple.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Alderman, anything for open forum?
I do want to say that I was just speaking with the resident Joy and with Schiller, and we will be looking at that alley. And also, I know that last year we had a lot of issues with garbage in that area and speaking to the owners of those complexes. So I will definitely reach out to resident Joy.
Okay. Alderman Pabon, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to share really briefly that in the fifth ward, we're going to start our, we're launching our process for participatory budgeting. So starting in May 1st, going through May 15th, it'll be early voting to decide some of the projects that residents have put together in terms of proposals. Folks will be able to vote at State Rep Rashid's office, along with Ebenezer Church as options. And then they'll also be able to vote online. And then, this is, I think, a really cool initiative to get young people involved. 14 and older fifth ward residents can also engage in this process, too. So just wanted to share that with folks today that are here and folks that are listening online.
Okay. Any other aldermen open forum? Hearing none. Item C1, please.
Item C1, are the minutes of the Committee at the Hall and the regular meeting on April 11th, 2023?
I'll make the motion to approve the Committee at the Hall and regular city council meeting minutes of April 11th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Faith to approve the Committee at the Hall and council minutes of April 11th, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item D1, please.
Item D1, are the bid results and recommendation for the 2023 seasonal landscaping project.
Hi, it's my motion, I'm sorry. Bob, I have a question. I know last year we kind of had a conversation about the frequency of maintenance on Surmac Road, and we, I had agreed to it remaining at its frequency of one, I don't remember, I think it's one time a week, is what?
What happens during the off-season is Waste Management empties the cans on Surmac Road one time a week, and Ogden Avenue one time a week. My staff supplements that. Once the landscaping contract begins, the landscapers will pick up twice a week, as well as Waste Management picking up once a week.
Okay, so technically, there's three?
There'll be three pickups a week on Surmac and on Ogden.
Okay, thank you. So it's my motion to concur, which Director Schiller's staff recommendation to award the 2023 landscape maintenance and watering for the Roosevelt Road corridor, Surmac and Ogden corridors, in addition to the application of mulch as directed to Diaz Group LLC. In the amount of 100, wait, I'm sorry, no, there is no amount here.
Well, you have several different amounts for different items.
The maintenance project is budgeted in, I'll let you take care of that, Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, second by Aronella, to concur with Director Schiller toward the 2023 landscape maintenance and watering for Roosevelt Road, Surmac and Ogden to Diaz Group LLC, the sole bidder. The various amounts are listed on the sheet, 7,500 for Roosevelt, 15,000 for Surmac, 15,000 for Ogden. Watering is 2,500 for Roosevelt, 6,500 for Surmac, 6,500 for Ogden. Mulch and supply spread is $45 a yard and $73 a yard. All those in favor, and we'll call the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item E1, please.
Item E1 is a communication from BDC Executive Director announcing a tourism grant award.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's with great pleasure that the Berwyn Development Corporation shares with you this evening that we received a $175,000 matching grant. The BDC has agreed to go ahead and donate the $175,000 match. That will provide for four block party wagons, as we're calling them, for each of the park districts. The block party wagon will come with 100 chairs, 10 tables, a 10-by-10 tent, a PA system, and a bags game. Working with the two park districts, they'll be administering it themselves. And this will be available to residents starting next year. It may come in later on this year. In addition to that, we've been able to acquire and put on order an Apex 3224 benchel trailer, which will be able to use by all of our governmental bodies within Berwyn, which will be a very nice event. So it's a stage that opens up to 32 by 24. It can be used by any of the governmental units. There'll be a small fee just for maintenance, et cetera. But we're excited to provide this to the community.
Motion is informational.
I'll make a motion to accept this communication as informational and thank the BDC for these grants.
Second.
Motion by Faith, uh, motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith to accept the communication as informational and thank the BDC for reaching out for those grants. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E2, please.
A communication from BDC regarding, requesting closure of Clinton on May 5th.
It'd be my motion to approve the closure of Clinton for Roosevelt Road on May 5th for the reopening of Berwyn Shops.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, second by Ruiz, to concur with the Director Halsberg and allow the closure of Clinton Avenue on Roosevelt Road on May 5th for the opening of the brand-new Berwyn Shops. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E3, please.
Item E3 is a communication from the BDC regarding a vacancy report and the vacant property ordinance update.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've provided informationally to you the commercial vacancy report for 2022 for quarters three and four. I'm happy to meet with any of you individually to go over your, your particular wards and what's going on there and what we're seeing. But I'd like at this time to call Nancy Gonzalez up to give you all a brief update on the vacancy ordinance and where we stand today, since we've now instituted the initiation of it.
Good evening. On April 13th, letters for the requirements of the vacant property ordinance were sent to 108 commercial property owners. The list of properties addressed were found, are, were found to be vacant for a period of three months or longer after several ride-alongs with the fire department. To date, I have conducted over 30 inspections and have been in contact via email or phone with over 25 property and business owners. The letters were sent to owners of record per the Cook County Property Tax Portal. During communication with business and property owners, I have been explaining the procedure, making sure that any questions or concerns are addressed, while reiterating the fact that our desire is to assist the owners through the process. The letter states that within 30 days of receipt, the business or property owner is required to register their property as vacant and pay a $300 registration fee. If the property is not vacant or has recently become occupied, they must file an appeal. I have been assisting with the appeal process by emailing the form directly and providing assistance with form completion. If the property is not registered by May 20th, the fee will be doubled to $600, as stated in the letter. A follow-up letter will be going out this week. And inspections and communications are completely ongoing.
And Nancy, I have, I think, three or four appeals on my desk that I have to send to you.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Nancy, just a quick question. So what has been the responses so far? Are, do you find that property owners are responding or being very resistant in every?
They are, they are responding.
Okay.
There have been a couple of people that are resistant, but I've spoken to them, explained to them how, you know, what the purpose of this is and how it really does help the community, and they've been great.
Good, glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yes, Nancy. I'll make a motion to approve this information, or make a motion to prove this as informational?
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Roywood, to consider the communication informational. Thank Nancy for the presentation, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E4, please.
Item E4 is a communication from BDC Director Halsberg regarding the first quarter BDC report.
Again, Mayor and members of council, this is informational for you. As part of our contract with the city, for the last four years, we have dutifully provided you with this report on a quarterly basis. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Alderman? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this as informational?
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Ruiz, to accept this informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E5, please.
Item E5 is a communication from Mr. Halsberg with a proposed service contract and resolution.
The BDC has been in existence now for more than 35 years. It's a sort of one-of-a-kind type organization. It's a great model that's, we're always contacted and said, how do you exist? How can you do as much as you do? And we couldn't do what we do without the city. And so this partnership has existed for, again, more than 30 years. And when I came on board nearly five years ago, one of the first things the mayor said is, let's, let's sit down and talk about the contract the way it exists, and let's go ahead and create a stronger contract for both parties on what we can expect, what those outcomes would be, and what those matrixes would look like. And that is something that we certainly have done. We went from what I'd say was a one-and-a-half-page contract to a 15-page contract that gives much more explanation on what our responsibilities and duties are to this community and what they should be able to expect from us. On January 21st, 2023, we had a strategic planning session with this board, with the city council and members of the BDC Board of Directors. It was a very fruitful conversation that we had that provided guidance. And in fact, that strategic plan that was developed was shared with this board and accepted by it as informational for the record. At this point in time, we'd like to go ahead and continue this contract with the city. While it's not up till December, there's always things that come up and get in our way. So we were able to go ahead and address the contract itself and be able to put it forward on the dais at this point in time. This contract would not take effect until January 1st of 2024. And as you may know, or should know, is this is always subject to budgeting. So if, if the city chooses not to finance or fund the BDC as part of it, as part of its budgetary process, it also has the ability to end this contract. Happy to answer any questions.
Dave, I have to add also that as part of the West Central Municipal Conference, many mayors have contacted me about how we do business with the Berwyn Development Corporation also over the years. So hats off to you guys. Any questions?
Just one. I'll put Dave in the heat, in the hot spot.
Okay, go ahead.
Where do you feel like we, as council members or as a city, could be better supporters to your, what have you found is the biggest barrier or not-successful point in the contract or the work that you do in comparison to the outcomes or results that we as a city or constituents are looking for?
Well, I'm not going to put anybody in the hot seat from what you did put me in. But what I would say is, one, we've gone through a pandemic. And our organization had to pivot and shift dramatically. And I think we did so very successfully in getting millions of dollars into our business community to help many of them be successful and continue on. Unfortunately, some were not able. The market, they could not react to the marketplace. And as we all know, we, we have an Adam Smith theory market. That means anybody can open any business that they would like, and they have to compete with their neighbor. And the best, really, in this kind of marketplace survive. When it comes to all of the aldermen, what I most appreciate is when you contact me and you say, can I walk my ward with you? And many, if not all of you, have done that. And so I really appreciate when, when you get involved with us and you take it upon yourselves to say, I care about my ward, and I want to be active in my ward, and my staff will walk side by side with you. And for those of you that are not bilingual, my staff is all bilingual. And that's a dramatic change that I think you've seen in our organization over the years, is we've tried to reflect our community here in Berwyn as part of our, our team. So let's just continue to work together, and I think as we continue to do that, we'll see even greater success.
Thank you. And what I mean by hot seat is I mean being candor, because I think that's the only way to triumph over challenges. So I appreciate your honesty. Thank you.
Any other questions? I will also state that I kind of put Dave in the hot seat myself. So we have meetings every other week, so we can update on everything, so we know what's going on.
Those are true hot seat situations.
That was a true hot seat, because unfortunately, I made Dave sweat on that one. So we did all right, though.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, no other questions, so I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution approving the agreement with the BDC in the amount of $875,000, fix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Faith, to adopt the BDC contract to the tune of 100, $875,000 by adopting the resolution, which incorporates the signatures on the contract. All those in favor, and we'll call the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item F1, please.
F1, communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of James E. Emery to the Auxiliary Review Board.
I move that we concur with Mayor Lovero's recommendation to appoint Berwyn resident James Emery Nichols to a two-year term. Mr. Nichols will also serve as the mayor's liaison in the lateral hiring process.
Second.
Motion by Laja, seconded by Aronella, to concur with the mayor's appointment of James Emery Nichols, the Auxiliary Review Board, who will also, and he will also serve as my liaison in the lateral hiring process. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. James?
Please raise your right hand. To you, James Emery Nichols. Having been appointed to the Auxiliary Review Board in the city of Berwyn and county of Cook, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and faithfully discharge the duties as an Auxiliary Review Board member, putting to the best of your ability.
I do. Hey, good luck, James, because the board has a lot of work for you to do. Item F2, please.
Item F2 is a communication from the mayor regarding the parade route and street closure resolution for the Recreation Department's baseball parade.
I motion to adopt the resolution and authorize the corporate authorities to affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Roywood, seconded by Lennon, to adopt the resolution, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I1, please.
I1 is a communication from Alder Person Ruiz announcing the second annual Hispanic Heritage Month Parade and Festival.
Well, I hope everyone's as excited as I am to know that we're going to host a second annual Hispanic Heritage Month Parade and Festival with hopes that it is equally and more successful as last year. Please put this date on your calendars. I hope that all my colleagues are present and participate in this monumental event for our community. As details come together, I will be sure to put that forth so that we can have agreement with the city, with the police department, with Public Works, and all other organizations. But my point in having this put forth now is just so I can advise the schools and other, not other organizations to get it on their calendar sooner than later, as we're obviously competing with multiple events happening during that month. So that is my motion as informational.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, second by Lennon, consider communication informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for those that can't clearly see it written, it's Sunday, September 24th. Thank you.
Item I2, please.
Item I2 is a communication from Alder Person Lennon regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 426 and 460 of the Codified Ordinance of Berwyn regarding street racing, drifting, and related activities for the city of Berwyn, county of Cook, state of Illinois.
I'll make the motion to adopt this ordinance, affix necessary signature, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Roywood, to adopt the amendment of the ordinance, fix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor, and we'll call the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J1, please.
Item J1 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca regarding settlement of 19WC 001327.
It'd be my motion to concur with City Attorney Bertucca in settle case 19WC 001327 in the amount of $16,277.40.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Lennon, to concur with City Attorney Bertucca in settling the encaptured Workman's Comp case in the amount of $16,277.40. All those in favor, and we'll call the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J2, please.
J2 is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller with an Arbor Day proclamation.
Are you going to read it, or just?
Would you like me to?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Whereas Julius Sterling Morton, namesake for the J Sterling Morton High School District, Morton College, and Morton Arboretum, was a noted agriculturalist among his many accomplishments.